Jeremy Gumbing.
Well, it's been Monday all day long.
In Hopkinsville?
It sounded like somebody was trying to.
There's a Casey Killers still up there.
That wouldn't be on the Kentucky bucket, I don't think. Not by itself. There's no talent. The what? Yeah, I have heard of.
And two, it makes like.
Nobody gets, nobody gets stung making these pictures, did they? He didn't get stung making these pictures. So when you cross the track, you look to the left, it looks just like that from the road.
Yeah.
And I never knew.
Those come with a title. Where's the title on that? Where's the bill of sale? Where's the gift? Where's the gift packs? I don't know. It's ours.
It retired out. Someone before Ralph.
I don't have any kids. They're all gone now.
Well, no, they all still live.
They're all still.
There's somebody parks there. I mean, last night I only had.
Thirty-one.
You got more park in there now than.
Know anything about Germany.
They're growing.
Their friends are like, hey, my dad was still let us live here.
She's got it all.
They're not that old yet.
Okay, let's, let's get this show on the road. So we're going to open up the meeting as we traditionally do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
But.
All right.
I pledge the. The United States of America into Republic of Canada, One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Okay. Welcome to the July meeting of the Calver City Council and we've had, we've had a tumultuous holiday. It seems like every July we, we talk about this celebration with a lot of people. Has anybody got a, a population estimate on where we grow to? On that, I picked up with the, I don't think anybody really has an answer for that, but.
There's a metric for figuring it, but unfortunately my math skills are too.
It looks like they'd have an app for a drone. Looks like the drone could fly over and just like. Well, I can neither, I can neither confirm nor deny that that happened.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's, in, in lack of a better, a better number, we'll use that one. No, no, it was, it was a lot of people there. It was, it was a good time had by all. I think that the weather cooperated fairly so other than just kind of being hot. But it was a very good time. So.
I have heard so many positive comments about the fireworks, about everything, but especially the fireworks.
Yeah.
But they thought they were the best ever.
They.
I have to agree.
They benefited from the new location, which promptly are not going to be able to do anymore. I think.
We got tarps.
We got tarps. I don't know.
We just string tarps over, over it and go, man.
But our, our newest bathroom wasn't within the safety perimeter. So, you know, that is it. That was, that was, well, anyway, that's part of it. It all worked out. Okay, I guess. So.
Brad said we can shoot them off the back of that new area lift he's fixing to get.
Get them even higher. Okay. Well, this, this seems a little odd for me as mayor. I do want to recognize the passing of my uncle. William J. Colburn. He was, he was a one of a kind and they, they broke the mode when they, when they built that one. A member of the greatest generation, I think that there's been a lot of positive articles about him and hopefully everybody's had a chance to, to read, read that. Thanks to everyone from, from the immediate family. It's an uncle, but you know, the kids were there and everybody appreciates the, the community coming out. And I think that that was a pretty good celebration. I think that Uncle Billy would have been proud of that. Family members got out at seven o'clock and I think I will say they hung out together till, for a few more hours. And I heard, I heard a few stories I hadn't heard before, but having the last name Colburn and, and holding the office of mayor, I've heard some stories I think I told that I, that some of them hadn't heard. That really surprised me. I mean, he was, he was a very smart guy and lived in an era when you just got things done. And I remember he's four months shy of his hundredth birthday. He would tell you he was in his hundredth year, which that's true. But he had a, he had a, a group of guys, a, a people, a, a community that was really proud of itself and growing. When we had this, this big industrialization and, and growth and, and it, it was a moving target. And they reacted, I think, and, and did things that they thought ought to be done and, and made an indelible market. A mark on the community. And I think Bill got some credit for that, was probably a ringleader and some of that, but he couldn't have done it without the whole group and certainly a brilliant man. And I, I think that that him passing away at this time and also credit to the group of supporters and just how they got things done in that era. They, they, they worked a lot more effectively, quickly, swiftly than, than we do. Better than we do, but they got things done. So anyway, do appreciate the community's support for that and wanted to mark it in, in the, in the Calver City minutes tonight. So with that said, as, as per normal, we'll go through and entertain a motion to, to approve and accept minutes of our June ninth meeting. I'm, I'm kind of tempted to combine all three, but we'll stay with our normal, normal. So would somebody want to move to accept the minutes as written?
I'll move to second.
A second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. And the same for June twenty-sixth, which was a special call and we took up one, one item and one item only. So we have a motion and a second?
Motion accept.
Okay, have a second? Second. All in favor? Okay. And the same for the next day on June twenty-seventh, where we did the second reading for that ordinance on, on vehicles. So somebody want to move to accept?
Make a motion?
Okay. I think we got all members of the council on that actually. All right. So looking around the room, we do have a couple of visitors and, and petitioner, but they are on the agenda. Do we have anyone else in here? I don't really see anyone. And with that said, Elizabeth, I will put Ms. Bud up here to give us a Kentucky Lake Economic Development update.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you all for letting me come and share with you tonight. I just wanted to come and give an overview of Kentucky Lake Economic Development. I know I've been in front of you before, but it's more project specific. So I just kind of wanted to share with you who we are and what we do and how we're both working together for the growth of Marshall County. So.
Help me helping. I thought you were going to ad lib it for a minute.
It could be, but it's gonna be more fun this way. I think she has. Yes, it'll work. Okay. So first and foremost, who are we and what do we do? So KLED is a nonprofit organization that leads economic development initiatives for Marshall County and cities of Calvert, then in the city of Harden. We are funded through public dollars such as yourself and the Marshall County Fiscal Board and the city of Benton. And then the rest of our funding comes from private investment. So private businesses in the community. So Ebonic, CFSD businesses such as that they invest into our organization in order to help us fulfill our mission and with our programming. And so of course, our core mission of KLED is to drive economic growth, create jobs, foster prosperity within Marshall County through strategic initiatives, partnerships, and innovative solutions. So I am led and governed by a board of directors, which I'm sure you all know many of these names. We have a five-member executive committee and then our entire board, which is made up of our elected officials as well as different industry throughout our community. But that is who I report to and work with. We have a very strong board, very active and engaged in working to move Marshall County forward in terms of business growth and development. So love working with them. Also, another big part of it is our regional partnerships. I work very closely with the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development as well as our local PAD office, the Delta Regional Authority, and our educational institutions, WKCTC, Murray State University, and the College of Engineering, UK College of Engineering in Paducah on some of our workforce initiatives. And then as well as the Small Business Development Center out of Paducah, we're lucky to have them located there. And we have a wonderful business coach in Aaron Horn. So all of those partnerships are what helped me in my day-to-day role. And as I always say, economic development is a team sport. And so I need all those people on my team to be able to do what I do and be successful. And then of course, what do we do? So are there economic development? It's multifaceted. There's a lot of different areas we have our hands on. The one you probably hear most about in terms of ED is the business attraction and recruitment side. So attracting new businesses into our community. So a lot of my time is spent doing that, marketing Marshall County and the sites we do have available for new industries looking in. But another big part of that is also making sure that we have a good open door with our existing industries. So at least once a year I'm out visiting with our existing businesses and industries, just learning from them about what they do, how is the health of their business? Are there any challenges they're seeing? Any challenges locally I can help them with on the state side, policy side? I like to say a little bit of a business concierge, you know, if they have an issue or need a question answered, come to me, ask me that so they can focus on what they do every single day and keep their minds on that. But that's a big part of what I do. So that attraction and then that BRNE side of things, which we, business recruitment and expansion. So of course, project investment, that's a lot of what we track in our industry. So those are new businesses that have moved into our community or existing ones that have expanded. So I came to Marshall County in twenty twenty-three. So since then, in twenty twenty-three, we had new capital investment coming into our community at two point two million dollars. Twelve new jobs were created that year. And then for in twenty twenty-four, we had eighty-five million dollars in new capital investment coming to our community and three hundred and fifty new jobs created that year for a total of eighty-seven point two million in capital investment and three hundred and sixty-two new jobs. So wonderful numbers. And we continue to work on growing those. So that was our project investment over the last two years. And so we also work on our active project pipeline. So these are projects that I'm actively working on a day-to-day basis right now. And so potential capital investment and new jobs are how we gauge a lot of these across the industry. So right now, our active project pipeline, we have the potential to have six hundred and fifty-eight million dollars in potential capital investment coming to our community as well as five hundred and seven new jobs. And so one of the things that has been difficult for me in economic development is I'm not a very patient person. And so a lot of these projects, they can be as quick as six months or they can go on for three to five years. We have one in our pipeline that I've been working on since last August. So you just never know. It can move really fast, but it can also move really slow, but the ROI is worth it. So patience is definitely the name of the game. And then another big piece that goes along with attraction of new industry as well as for our existing industry is making sure we have the infrastructure and site readiness available. So our prime piece of property that we have that I'm able to market to the state, to the cabinet for economic development and different site consultants I work with is Southwest One Industrial Park, which of course is located in Benton. It's two hundred and sixty plus acres, all the available infrastructure is ready to go, all the utilities. It is certified build ready by the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development. There are only so many build ready sites across the state. So having that designation is really important because when the cabinet does receive projects, a lot of the times they will go straight to what are our build ready sites? Because how fast can we help this company get to market? Speed to market is a really big deal right now, as you all can imagine. So they look at those sites first. So that was one of the first things I did in August of twenty twenty-three was to make sure Southwest One was on that list and continued to have her prepared. And as you can see, that is the overall map showing where the build ready sites are in the state of Kentucky. We are the most western build ready site. So very proud of that designation. And I think they're about twenty-five, twenty-eight or so. So not that many in the grand scheme of things. And you think about all one hundred and twenty counties across the state. So really excited to have that certification and have the cabinet recognize this as such. And then also another big piece, it's just continuing to make sure we have these sites ready to go. The more build ready they are, the better. So one of the projects we completed this year is our alternate entrance project going into Southwest One. So this is an alternate entrance that will eventually connect around to Southwest One Boulevard, which is the main entrance. This project was completed through a Delta Regional Authority grant with a match coming from the Marshall County Fiscal Board. So we were able to finish this project and just here are some photos. Our piece of make sure that pretty is ready to go. It's always prints in and out of an industrial park for trucks and heavy traffic and for safety purposes as well. We also just completed a TBA and best prep grant, which we have the engineering done for all the roads to be done, leading from the alternate entrance to Southwest One Boulevard. And then of course, like I said, business retention and expansion, BRNE is another huge part of what we do. So as you all know, we have a really great existing industry base. Eighty percent of new job growth in the community comes from our existing businesses, which a lot of times people are surprised by. They would think it's new industry actually coming in that brings, that rises those numbers. But it's actually our existing industries that help that number grow. So we are very blessed with a lot of great businesses here that continue to grow and that are very successful. Whenever I bring new companies in and they're looking to potentially locate here, if we can show we have a very successful existing industry base, it's just more reason for them to come and locate their business here in Marshall County. And then of course, last but not least, the marketing and promotion of Marshall County is another thing that I do. So we're being very targeted in that. I'm a part of a regional group called Kentucky Cornerstone, which is made up of seven different counties in our region. We're all marking together. We've realized we can do that and go farther if we do that together. And then of course, workforce development partnerships, I continue to work on those every day and working to expand those, but just making sure we have open communication between our existing industry and our local school system so that we continue to build that talent pipeline and have that talent ready to go for our existing industry and any new is also a huge important piece. As well as entrepreneurship, we have a great group of entrepreneurs in our community. And so I think that is another thing we're working to grow as well as small business services. But just continuing to grow those programs is another piece of KLED that we offer to the community. We're always looking and making sure we bring value back into our community through our mission. And so those are just two things we're working on expanding. And so some goals for the coming year, just some things we are looking on. Of course, site development is always going to be important. Right now we have Southwest One Industrial Park, which is a phenomenal site. But I would love to have another site in our community in case Southwest One doesn't work for a company. I'd love to have a second option. So we don't lose that project to a surrounding area or county. So in terms of site development, we do have a grant program called the Kentucky Product Development Initiative. That is money that is designated by the state legislature that economic development organizations can apply for to go towards site development. So anything from acquiring land, acquiring land to putting wastewater in, to increasing electrical capacity, to getting a spec building built. Those are funds we can apply for and can get back in return to work on those things. So this year, looking at potentially applying for KPDI. That application will be due in September. So we're working with our community partners on what that project may be for us in Marshall County. Continuing to update Southwest One Due Diligence. Of course, with all these projects, there is a lot of due diligence pieces that must be done on these properties. And those expire after a certain time. So working to continue to make sure those are up to date and we have the best information possible for when I turn in our advice for these projects is another thing we're working on. We are also going to be putting Southwest One through a ready sites certification. This is through the Site Selectors Guild of America, which is the association that site consultants are a part of. And what they have done is they have made a national standard for what is considered a site being ready. And so you're scored on four different levels. And so we are going to apply Southwest One to that. There's only two other sites in Kentucky that have that designation. So hoping to fill that out this fall and have that designation back by the end of the year. So just another piece of marketing for us. Cause those sites, those ready sites, they go into a database that those site consultants look at first when they get projects. So it's just another database to have the site on. And so just another set of eyes to go on that. And then marketing, Marshall County, of course, that's always been a part of our main mission, main mission. And we do that in a variety of ways. Site consultant meetings, I traveled to Atlanta this past January and had one-on-one meetings with those site consultants just to build those networks and connections with them. A lot of times they do send projects directly to the state. So at the cabinet level. But if you have those relationships with them, they will send them directly to you, which is even better. So just continuing to work on those. I'll be traveling to Chicago to that market in the fall to share about our region. And then we have a brand new website. If you all haven't checked it out, I highly suggest you do. It went through a remodel this year. And then we also have a maiden Marshall business spotlight. So those are business spotlight that are focusing on our existing industry. And so last year we highlighted Precision Sonar that's located in Benton. And then West Kentucky Aqua Ponics, which is located there as well. But just overall showing what we have in our community and how successful these businesses can be. And then our final, to continue to grow investment, of course, the more funds KLED has, the more we can go out and do. I think one of the things that a lot of people don't know is that unlike other organizations across the state, economic development does not have a steady revenue stream deemed to it. Unlike tourism that has the transient tax that funds them, all of the economic development organizations across the state funded through public investment and then private dollars. So none of us have a just standard revenue stream coming our way. So it was a wonderful and huge deal when you all increased your investments to KLED this year, which we very much appreciate. And it will help us to go out and do more in the community and share what a great place it is to live, work, and play in Marshall County. So those are just some of the things we have going on right now and some of the things we're looking to do moving into this year. So I think I stayed on my time. Mayor told me ten minutes. Too far over it. If I did, I apologize.
Well, I didn't, I didn't start the stopwatch, but I think you did very, very good job of covering a lot of ground.
Yeah. So I love what I do. So I could talk about it for ages, but you all have my contact information. If you'll ever have any questions about anything, if you need stats on something, please contact me at any time. But you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but thank you all so much.
Any questions? Okay. We're easy to get along with tonight.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Thank you, Elizabeth. Let's do the caboose next. Since we're, we're amend our, our order of business here a little bit, we're going to bring a discussion on caboose forward. Do you have a multimedia here? You got it?
Yes.
Okay. John, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. I was contacted some time back, the friend of mine actually runs or is the director of the Kentucky Railroad Museum. It's what acknowledged is, it's not, I guess it's not, it is listed as the one official Kentucky Railroad Museum.
Where is it?
It's in New Haven. Just off the, the Bluegrass Parkway. And James had said that some of his council or his board members had actually come across the, the caboose here and said it was an ICG and they were interested in it because ICG doesn't exist apparently in this area. It, it may not exist at all. I don't know. Illinois Central Gulf. But they said it was in decent shape and they were interested in, in seeing, trying to find out who owned it and maybe they might donate it or whatever. I said, well, I can tell you who owns it. It's us. I said, I said, and he said, do you think that they would be interested in donating it to the, to the museum? I said, well, just have to look and see. So I went and he was going to come down with some of his board members to look at, go through it and look at, but I took some photographs and sent them back. And, and today he actually caught someone back said that they were, they were interested, very interested and said it was in better shape than they thought it was. It's been sitting there, probably what thirty years, you think?
I've heard about it like twenty years ago and had no idea. So it's been there a long time.
It was, it was here before I got here. So I don't know. I keep looking to Lloyd and he's not stepped up to the plate on this one.
It's been there for at least twenty years.
Oh, it's more than twenty.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I said at least.
Okay, yeah. Well, any, anyway, it was a donation from what I understand. We've never really come across, do anything with it. And the pictures that I took, if you want to run through, this is the outside of it is just, is, has added some rust, you know, but that's just because the paint, paint is peeling. Oh, you gonna make me run through the slideshow for you?
No, I've already looked at it twice. Where is it located now, John?
It's over rail services. It's been there the whole time. Yeah. It is on the end. It says you cross railroad tracks there. It's right on your left as you go in. This is interior looking from the back going forward. Yeah, there's paint and stuff off, but it's not horrendous. The, the does have a, a restroom facility in it. These are the, the two steps to go up to the upper caboose area for vision with both sides.
Waving at kids.
And then this right here is the, the office area. It's got a bench and then they've got storage facilities. This one actually had a fuel container at the back of it. So I'm assuming that was their heat, heating fuel. And then looking back the other direction and all the numbers are still there. The electrical box is still other than a bird nest, it looks like it's still repaired. But the, the number is ICG one nine nine three nine six and it is still visible all over that, that rascal. A lot of the writing on there that you would see stenciled up there, this light switches for this, this. Those are all still there. So I mean, it's, it's, it's not in as bad a shape as you would first think. But I do know.
I mean, be honest with you, I'm all for it. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, you, you don't have to sell, sell me on it. And I do think it would be nice if there was a plaque that it was donated by the city of Calvers.
I'm sure they was, they could do that. Yes.
I'm not going to take a swing either way. But Illinois Central Gulf Railroad is this railroad that went right through Calver.
Until nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-eight when Jim Smith and, and both the railroad between Luke and.
But it was just Illinois Central before it was.
It was, when I was a child, it was just the Illinois Central.
They changed her name.
This is ICG. That's what's stenciled on it. It's not IC. It's an ICG.
The railroad was ICG.
And I remember that because Fulton had a switching yard and it was there for you. You know, as I grew, as I grew up, I could watch the, the engines rotate on that turntable.
I will say that I will give you this bit of information. In our discussions about the historic distance, there was at least one or two people who wanted to have that caboose put down somewhere over there. Now, I can tell you it's going to cost a lot of money to do anything for that caboose. And the other thing is that people who think you could put some kind of office in one or something like that, they're virtually impossible for somebody my age to get up and into without, without breaking or skinning something. And they don't, I mean, they're just to be looked at. You, you have, you'd have to build a platform and everything to actually get it. You know, that's, I mean, that's a, a very fair assessment. My wife's hometown has got a caboose just like that. They big stuff. And then try to keep an office in it and nobody would go in it. Those are virtually anything.
So.
They're built for a very specific.
Well, I've been to the railroad museum and it's been several years ago. I got to ride Thomas the Tank Engine, by the way, but.
They had that not too long ago.
It's beautiful. I mean, it's beautifully taken care of and they have a, a museum there with model trains and stuff. I was, I'm sure it's been improved since then, but it, it's a nice, it's a nice place.
Very, since this is not a governmental entity, it is a nonprofit, but not a governmental, we may have to set it out in a disposition or do a I'll take proposals or something like that. We'll have to talk with legal on that to see how the best way to dispose of it legally. We're not going to do it for scraps, but you know, for the historic value. Who would, who would do that? That's what we're looking for.
But we have given, you know, the fire department has given away equipment to other.
But they gave to the fire departments, which are government entities. And unfortunately they're nonprofit, but not a private, they're not a governmental entity.
What is, what is the name of the organization?
It is the Kentucky Railroad Museum.
At New Head.
I'm sorry?
New Head. New Haven.
New Haven.
Not not real far from Hodginsville or Morgantown in that area.
Okay.
Man named Bob Johnson has had, when I worked at Dick's son, he had a small railroad museum there in the, I think there's a restaurant in there. N C and L building, is that what that is on Third Avenue?
Well, I've I've heard two council members already support the idea of donation. I haven't heard from you guys. But one of my ideas is, I was at the meeting that Lloyd was at and and well, several of us. You know, somebody locally had a viable proposal. I think, I think I'd wanna hear about it and I can assume that you guys would wanna hear about it. But it's a long way from making a proposal from scratch to donate to organization that's. Pun intended, guy has a track record, you know.
Well, wouldn't you say that if it's been there nearly thirty years that people had ample time to make proposals?
That's true.
I didn't know about it.
I didn't either.
I didn't even know about it. I mean, I've been.
With with the caveat that maybe people didn't know about it. Um, and then the proposal is gonna look a lot like, okay, Calperton needs to do this. Probably because it's gonna be, I mean, it it wow, it'd be a lot. Um, I don't know how y'all feel about it. This is one idea that we could, you know, maybe uh. Put a, put a little delay on that to see if somebody wanted to really come up and and mount a vocalized. Save it, but I don't want to sit here another twenty years, obviously, but uh.
You also have it with that museum. To me, you have people who know what they're doing. You know, and they're willing, willing to do that.
They're willing to come get it.
Right.
Take care of the cost of it.
Let's, let's do, what we'll do this, we do a written disposition of it, number one, to say that we can surplus it. And then we'll go about getting some paperwork together from different proposals on what they wanna do with it, so you guys will have that information. Okay?
So that'll be, that'll be. And then we don't get it done there. There'll be some time that if somebody just is is really enthusiastic. They're they're highly encouraged to come screaming out of the woodwork and really try to do something.
Because we know there's a lot watching this, this.
And maybe there should be a caveat to that, that it would either be a personal or another organization that the city doesn't feel like. And I'm not speaking for y'all, y'all can tell me if you feel different, but the city is not interested in doing.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And it's just gonna continue to deteriorate.
There's just a lot there. You gotta have somebody who knows what they're doing. You've gotta have a way to fund it and you need, you need to have some kind of idea you're gonna make it where. It's something other than than something setting out of the field, but you're constantly having to invent things to do. I mean, I don't, I it's pretty high bar to try to get something viable.
Could save everything.
Me too.
But this is a way of saving it, just not here.
Yep. So I wanted to put in a little plug. If if somebody's really passionate about this, uh, they need to make your favorite council member and city. All aware of it and you need to, if you really wanna get going, you need to come screaming out of the woodwork and say, hey, this is something different. Because it's just a lot of heavy lifting. And if we can do something that's maybe a little more closer to home, it might be valuable to us, but wow, it just seems like a lot and uh. It's gonna take a lot of somebody enthusiasm and selling to have a good viable proposal against this, so.
And I just wanna throw in one more thing. I had a lot of family. My brother was a signal maintainer. I have a lot of family and a lot of history with Illinois Central and Illinois Central Gulf. So it is something special.
Right.
I mean, thoroughly.
It needs to be maintained.
Yes.
And this is, don't mean to put words in your mouth, it's a very viable option. Okay. All right. Any questions on that? Any more comments? No? No? Okay. All right. Now we got some new business to consider. Do we need to go back to some old business? I'm sure we have old business that we wanna entertain any right now. No? Okay, um, you guys uh have uh received a letter. Written to the mayor. And we've got uh something here in front of us. We've got an ask from Churchill Downs who we've. Who we support are enthusiastically awaiting uh their presence in our community. There's, there's a. Been an ask to examine our uh alcohol ordinance. And um. We could introduce, we can consider the introduction of an ordinance amending uh section six. Of ordinance two fifteen eleven to extend hours for the sale of alcoholic beverages. If somebody wanna make a motion to introduce this.
Do we have to, if we want discussion, do we have to introduce?
We're gonna, yeah, introduce it, please.
Make a motion to introduce.
Okay, you got a second?
Just a second.
Second.
Okay, so we got an introduction and a second. Okay, so we, uh, I think we can read the ordinance that we have in front of us and then we'll open it up for discussion, okay? Is that good? Ready to read? Is wide on the spot? Check her communication skills here.
From this amending section six of ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash eleven of the Calvert City Code of Ordinances to extend hours for sale of alcoholic beverages. Whereas the city of Calvert City's existing ordinance allows the sale of alcohol from six AM to midnight Monday through Sunday. And whereas the city council of the Calvert, of the city of Calvert City has determined that the commonly observed service hours of alcohol. Across Kentucky are extending further than the hours of the city of city Calvert City's existing ordinance. And whereas the city of council of the city of Calvert City wishes to extend the hours of the sale of alcohol to three AM. Now therefore be it ordained. Calvert City Council of Kentucky, that section six of ordinance number two thousand fifteen. Dash of the Calvert City Code of Ordinances is amended as follows. Section six, hours for sale and delivery. A liney shall be permitted to sell, sell or dispense spirits, wine and or malt beverages Monday through Sunday between the hours of six AM and three AM. B, all delivery of alcoholic beverages in the city shall be made between the hours of six AM and midnight. Monday through Saturday, no delivery shall occur on Sunday. And then for section C, um, it would be removed as it would no longer be applicable. Um, in.
So that is, um, that is one proposed amendment and we'll open it up for discussion. If anyone wants the floor or has questions to ask Ashley or anyone else, and we do have representatives of Churchill tonight, if we wanna. Do the business and ask questions. So with that.
I I do have things I'd like, I've got some discussion.
Uh, I did have just a couple of questions and uh, Mike Cheek Cannon was the one I wanted to ask the question, Mike. Cheek Cannon. I would just like to know that how you felt as far as police coverage. Uh, with the change in this ordinance, if you had the police and. Uh, just what, just general opinion.
Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather. Um, police departments want to adapt to whatever we have to. If you guys wanna go this route, we're fine. Uh, that's why I kinda asked for another position so we could have another person out at night. I didn't really. Know about that.
I should have called you earlier.
Oh, no, that's fine, that's fine. I'm trying to think, uh, so. With this being that proposed, I don't think the police departments wanna have any issues with that. Uh, we will uh work around it, uh.
Just no one knew about number police department. That was basically my question.
I don't think this will be a burden of the police department.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions on this?
Anybody anything for Chief? Okay. All right.
That one was, does this include package sales?
Does this include package sales?
Also, yes. Package drink by the drink, both.
Can you divide those?
You can, but I don't know. Most stores, if you'll notice, are not gonna be open past midnight. The ones that are gonna be open past midnight are even convenience stores and then Martha's Gate. Uh, but your package stores are gonna close down eleven, twelve o'clock. They're not gonna stay up.
Some thank them, they not.
So.
Staying open until.
Right, so, so the package, the package.
Till midnight.
So you've heard.
So the package, the package stores that we have currently.
Yes.
Do not extend to the current hours of midnight. But I I have not thoroughly researched whether I can buy a six pack of beer somewhere at eleven fifty nine at the convenience stores. I'm sure that would continue. That would consent, that would continue because they're paying the ones that are open twenty four seven. They've got that merchandise to sell.
Okay.
So they're, right now, in in the ordinance as it stands that we've adopted, there's no separation. It could be built in. Right? We could build that in. So this is the most simplistic look at this ordinance as we could and uh, that's what I I brought to you guys is to have something to talk about and then capture your feelings on this issue.
So I didn't know whenever this, when I first heard about this, I didn't really know what other cities did. All of the alcohol ordinance are listed, unlike most ordinances, you can't find a lot of local ordinance because they're not allowed, but all the alcohol ordinances are. So I was looking at some of the surrounding cities just to get an idea. Just to give you a few of them, like Edible, six AM to one, but they do split up package until midnight. Uh, Grand River, six AM to twelve, midnight, um. Paducah was the exception that they are six AM to three, but packages midnight split up. Um, KD, six AM to midnight, Benton, six AM to midnight. Massaville, six AM to midnight, Murray, six.
A lot of those actually modeled off us.
Catawba is till one thirty. Oak Grove is till three and Owensboro is till two, which is, yes, like if you look at the the facilities there. They're open twenty four seven, but like Oak Grove serves alcohol until one o'clock during the week and three on weekends and then Owensbrow's. Uh, like they're twelve during the weekend too. On the weekends, probably because of that. Go ahead, um, turns out it gets more dangerous the, you know, the longer you extend those hours. So there is a lot of information out there. A lot of studies have been done. The most comprehensive I found, uh, published on the government website, National Library of Medicine. They did a review of ten qualifying studies. I'll quote the conclusion of that review. This review found that increasing hours. When alcohol may be sold by greater than two hours increased alcohol related harms. These findings provide sufficient evidence. For the effectiveness of maintaining limits on hours of sale for the reduction of alcohol related harms when efforts are made to increase hours by greater than. Two. So, you know, we're talking about going from twelve to three. That would exceed most of the surrounding cities by two or three hours. And then so when you do that, what they found is when you have one city open that much later than the others. You'll have people in those cities that stay in whatever facility they can as long as they can. And then when they run out of time, the ones that wanna go pretty hard, they go on to the the next city that is, you know, still serving. So, um.
Yeah, there's something on that.
Okay.
I'm not saying, I'm not disagreeing with you, but what I will tell you is the star training is required by every server in that facility, all, all of it served by the drink. And if they're caught selling, and they do it someday, but if they're caught selling to someone who's already intoxicated. They can be criminally charged and so, so I mean, that's that's crime, it's a crime if they're selling alcohol to somebody intoxicated. That being said, we know it does happen, but that's just, just for your information.
So my opinion, um, we wanna continue to work with Churchill. We worked with them on the revenue bond. I suggest and I would be comfortable with working with them again on this and setting a one thirty curfew. As opposed to three o'clock and splitting off package sales and leaving them at the current midnight or off brand sales. That would be what I would be comfortable with.
Okay, that's a well thought out opinion. I'd like to see the reference to that study too, and you can email them to. Everybody, okay. Anybody else have a a question or an idea or something they wanna really say? I mean, we can ask, uh, and they. You guys took the trouble to come sit and had, I'd certainly like to get you to address it. What you feeling on package?
I don't mind. I have a package store, so you can split it, that's fine. At the three AM and uh.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
And I, if I would like to say something, Churchill Downs.
Somebody wanna, uh, you know, we've got a copy of the letter. If you guys wanna come up, introduce uh whoever's gonna be the spokesman and and address the council on on the. You know, undoubtedly, and it puts you on, like, come on both of you. Uh, and and this gives your name, some of the Glenn that can get your name proper, but uh, you know, we we support Churchill. We want you to have a successful business model and we also need to make sure it's safe. And well, that, so, with this said, and uh, this gets James first.
Director of Compliance from Churchill. Adam Hensley, H E N S L Y.
Okay, so, um, what what would you guys like to tell us about extending these sales? What it means to you guys and how you gonna take care now? We we have to be cognizant. This is ordinance is not just for martial yards, it's for whoever else might come along. So, okay, that said.
So I'll start a little bit with the reason why we uh asked for the. So part of my gaming facility, we are a gaming facility, uh, restaurant and also an entertainment facility. So on the weekends, we are looking to have a program, um, and what we've seen at other other properties is it does help, um. Encourage guests to stay, enjoy themselves responsibly, uh, while they see entertainment or they gain responsibly as well. Uh, so as you mentioned, your other, uh, our other properties in the state do have extended hours on the weekends. Uh, it's not across the board, but specifically I came from Oak Grove and they do have extended weekend hours because they have live entertainment on the weekends. And uh, it does help from that perspective to keep guests out in play. Also, then I will let Adam talk a little bit more from our responsible gaming perspective, uh, which will address some of your other questions.
Well, Dave, before, before you go, so, um. Some of your other facilities have extended hours on like Friday and Saturday night or Friday, Saturday and Sunday night, or I mean. We'll give some examples and kind of put you on the spot without data.
Uh, so Oak Grove specifically, they are, well, so currently that property is Thursday, Friday and Saturday, they're eight AM when they open until three AM. And then Sunday through Wednesday, they're eight AM until one AM. Looking at, and and this goes back, we probably changed it up at four or five months ago at this point. Um, on Thursday, it was till one AM. Um, but again, looking at keeping guests in play, responsible alcoholic beverages, um, and then also just from the overall experience. Uh, there was an opportunity to extend those hours till three AM on Thursdays.
So it's Thursday, Friday and Saturday?
Thursday for, currently it's Thursday, Friday and Saturday till three AM.
Does that, uh. Does that fit well with your business model as far as when you're, when you're seeing the most business?
Yeah, so typically our highest volume days are Friday and Saturday, um, Thursday evening and then also Sunday day. Or when most of our guests are in the building. Um, so yeah, it just helps keep, again, keep those guests in play. Give them the opportunity to stay on the game playing, uh, the entertainment facility, but also from a responsible gaming perspective. We can give guests the ability to stay on on the game longer, helps with the revenue perspective from our standpoint, uh, tax revenue. Uh, and then also from the team member perspective. Uh, if we are able to extend those uh hours of operation for alcohol sales. We will, we'll, we'll be able to.
Any question?
I was just gonna say, one of the things I think with us is Oak Grove, you have, um, Fort Campbell, you have Clarkson, and you have Hopkinsville. You have more of a population that where we're smaller and stuff and that, I think that's one of the concerns that we have that. The crowds will have to be, have to be, have to come in and then go on. That's just one of our concerns.
You're from Owensboro, has it got an associated, it it doesn't have an associated uh hotel or any property with it?
It does not.
Okay, so it, okay.
No, and then one more comment I'd like to make, um, I'll be at the local police, uh, we do partner very well with our local police department at Oak Grove. The intention is once we start to get staff on for martial yard, is to reach out to the local police department and establish a relationship with them.
And we've certainly heard good things about Oak Grove.
Thank you. Uh, but I'll let him speak a little bit more, uh, the Churchill Downs responsible gaming and alcoholic beverage policies.
So a couple of the comments that came up in council and I fully agree with you about making sure that, you know, we're doing so responsibly with serving our guests. So Churchill Downs has a very robust alcohol and responsible gaming program as it stands. Uh, we're an entertainment destination, you know, we we obviously understand we want people to come and gamble at our facility, but we wanna do so responsibly. That carries beyond alcohol service. We have programming in places for our responsible gaming program and our alcohol policy, which are separate and distinct, that when people come into our facility, we want them to do so in a responsible fashion. Uh, we do not promote intoxication, um, you know, that's actually against our responsible gaming. Uh, we do not promote intoxication, um, you know, that's actually against our responsible gaming program, and I'm going to touch on that a little bit. So responsible gaming program is, you know, just like any, we, we want someone that comes in, that they are spending their money in a fashion that they're comfortable with. So if you go to, let's say, a Disney World, uh, Six Flags, or any other entertainment destination, you're willing to pay a prize for an experience at that facility. Facility is no, when people exceed that, uh, that ability to regulate themselves, so to speak, that's where we step in. Uh, and it's so different from an alcohol perspective, where individuals may be showing signs of intoxication, we're going to step in and we're going to, uh, stop that activity. Uh, one of the things that, uh, uh, City Minister Warden was starting, we take that very seriously. We make sure that all of our staff is trained in responsible alcohol service. We have a dedicated surveillance team that monitors or, uh, potential, um, over-service, and we will, if anything is potentially, um, crossing the line of our policy, we need to address that with the staff. Uh, and we make sure that when we tell our staff, you know, we are not a place that you come for intoxication, you know, we want you to enjoy yourselves, but enjoy yourselves responsibly. With that, is there any questions that I can answer?
You mentioned, uh, entertainment, uh, at Oak Grove and maybe one or two, are you planning to have that same type of entertainment at this facility?
Yes, our, our facility is being built with a sports bar and a, a potential live band option, um, so we are looking at that as a central entertainment option.
Adam, I do have a question for you or, or a kind of comment, so we've had, um, some of the local clergy express an interest in this in the community, they are concerned about it, they, they've been questions about how they could make contact with Churchill on some of these programs, there was anything like that, so I'm going to channel into you. Is that okay?
Sure, no, absolutely.
And I, I think it's, you know, if you, you know, it, it's, this is a regional pool, I mean, how, I mean, I don't know too much about your business model, how far around you're going to pull, but I think the local ministers in particular, if we had folks that were, you know, calling the eight hundred number or whatever, they just wanted you guys to have some contact information.
And, and I can speak to that, I'm, I'm assuming they're, they're alluding to the responsible gaming aspect of that.
Right, mm-hmm.
Uh, so Churchill operates under what's called a bandit one, bandit all policy, meaning if any individual at any of our facilities nationwide indicates that they have a gambling problem in any facet, uh, they're excluded from all of our facilities. Uh, we don't question that, we don't persuade them, it is a simple discussion, now if they come to us and say, I do not want any of your facility, by all means, uh, we will sign them off. And that information to send to all of our properties across the country to ensure that they are, are not allowed in our facility. Uh, we have, uh, great systems in place that help, uh, identify these individuals. I will concede that there is opportunity for some individuals that they exclude, and say, Oak Grove, they could make it into martial yards, but, uh, we make every effort to keep them out. If we do identify them, we will walk them out immediately from the facility, we'll let them know, uh, that the parameters of their exclusion or eviction in certain instances, uh, and send them on their way. Uh, and again, to, uh, to Dave's point, we do partner with local law enforcement, where if there is an issue, we, we are happy to oblige by calling local law enforcement, getting them involved as needed.
Yeah. Um, anybody have any more questions for our Churchill reps at all? Thanks for the presentation, I found it informative and I think it opens up, opens up some opportunities for us to think about it.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I don't know how to really, uh, channel this conversation around and do some, some other things, but I heard a desire to separate package sales from drink sales, right? Okay, so we can.
Be comfortable with that.
Midnight. Yes. And then.
Yeah, I mean.
Liquor by the drink, how do you want to handle that?
If we wanted.
I'm sort of like the, I'm sorry, Kendall.
I, I was just kind of spitballing here, something like they have at Oak Grove, six to one, Sunday through Wednesday and Thursday through Saturday, six to three. Man, that's kind of, kind of meat in a row a little bit, and that's, uh, would kind of help, help them out on weekends and stuff like that. That's just a suggestion, and that's just an idea I have.
Well, I think that, I think weekends is the only time that the three AM would come into play.
I agree, I agree.
And I think too, in all fairness, if you are in a sports bar or something and you have a live band there and they start to set at eight o'clock, and then maybe another set at ten, I, I don't know if I've got the times right, but most people aren't ready to go home at twelve, they're just not, you know, and I, I'm sort of like, I was going to say what Kevin said, but I would be okay with that.
So I don't know, um, the, the structure of the ordinance, that we can stick it all in section six, make the, make the difference in section six.
Yeah.
That's something you guys could live with?
Do like Oak Grove.
Is that something?
Well, to clarify, not that we wanted to have to serve until three or expect them to serve until three, it was just the opportunity. Instead of having this day at one, one hour and this day at seven hours, so to your suggestion, it wasn't what we were planning on doing, go three across the board.
That's fine.
Yeah, well, it, it, it was a letter to get the ball rolling, to foster this discussion.
I'm just, I'm just kind of up here making some ideas and.
Appreciate that.
And I'm not, I'm, I'm still not really sold on three on the weekends. I think it's out of character for a city of, like us and for this area, um, and I think, uh, you know, going three hours is, I don't know that the people of Calvert City that that serves their best interests. I still like one thirty. But as far as six of us. Uh.
Nita made the motion originally, she wants to amend the motion.
Well, the motion is introduced, the motions, they introduced the, the conversation, and we, we really haven't really talked about it, amending it in great detail. I mean, we see, we see kind of a unanimous split of, of package versus drink.
Just asking, I mean, we're, we're just discussing, I mean, that's what, that's what we're here for, I mean, I just, and that's just, all I made is a suggestion, Dustin made a suggestion.
I don't know if you want to amend this one, or once we decide what we thought we want, is to make a new one.
Yeah, right, right.
Something like that would be easier.
Well, let's, let's try to, you know, balled up and, and see, we can come up with something that we can, could, can agree with.
Well, I think we, we're all in agreement that we want the package and the liquor by the drink.
The package can stay at midnight.
Correct, I agree. And we got, we got, everybody's got a consensus on that, okay, so we got the consensus on that. Okay, and, uh, what about splitting out different hours on weekends versus, um, Sunday through Wednesday, and then split out a difference hours on Thursday, is, is, that's going to be a little diff, more difficult to get to, but, uh, we can have a conversation about it, so.
Um, well, I like that better than across the board, uh, whenever we first got this email, um, like I tell my children, nothing good happens after one AM. Except in a casino, I guess, but, um, they're not old enough for that, thank goodness, so, um, I don't know, I, I, I definitely see both sides, I, I see their, their perspective, and I also have some hesitancy there, I don't know, um.
And if you're going to do three on the weekends, then, you know, I don't think three matters as much during the week, so you might as well just make it three. Not saying I would, that that's what I want to do, I'm just saying, the weekends is where the three o'clock's going to matter. Bargaining with me?
Well, I mean, it's based on what you've said.
It's actually greater than eight for two, two hours.
I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, I'm trying to go to a happy medium there, that, you know, because I'm not really thrilled with three, I mean, but if you did, if you split the difference.
I'm only one school probably going to be in here at five or two.
Okay.
That they did say is that they would be open, and they have, they had the, they, they have the option that they can sell until three, it doesn't mean they're going to. If there's nobody there, they're going to close it, right?
Well, that's the, you know, it's, it's a business, you stand around and look at each other and there's, that, yeah, that's a problem, so.
It's the plan, the plan to be open twenty-four seven like Oak Grove, but then just limit, okay, it's not.
Propose this operation, but we're currently, we're thinking of opening around nine AM, uh, and closing at three AM midweek, and then pasted five AM on Friday and Saturday. Okay, but we're, we're, we're still working through that.
Okay.
I would go for two. I would bend to two.
I would too.
So we are bargaining, okay, I like it. I do, I do, I mean, we haven't seen, we haven't seen a link to the study, and this, hey, listen, this.
Now, this is across the board, right, this is not just for martial.
Well, then, and we do have another representative of another affected business in here, if, if, uh.
That says no.
Mr., Mr. Ricecliff, have you got anything that you'd like to say, then, for Kentucky State Parks and, and this issue, since you do happen to be in the room?
This is the first I heard of it, so.
Okay.
Still thinking through the opportunities, um, weekends definitely. I would say weekend would be to extend the hours from the current midnight to, uh, one, two, three, whatever your final decision is. I don't see any real difference between one and three in some respects. Uh, from our vantage point, one versus three is going to be the same opportunity. Um, because we're probably not going to be looking at our restaurant, but we're going to be looking at our catering service.
So, convention, the convention hall mainly, is that? Okay.
Uh, running, running, and I'm just spitballing again here without doing a lot of investigation, but I'm saying that that's a distinct possibility. Uh, for advertising for us to operate till two, three o'clock in the morning, not be a bad thing. Now on Monday, Tuesday night in December, no.
You don't care, you don't care.
Yeah, I don't care.
Okay, I got it.
So, um.
All right.
It'll take some more time.
Well, I'm, uh, yeah. So, this is, this is first reading, this.
Saying would be foolish not to do it, from my point of view.
Right, so, so I think what I've heard, so what I, what I'm hearing you say, and you've heard yourself say, but I'm going to say it again, is that we're going to separate out package at midnight. And, and apparently the current market in Calvert City is before that, so that's fine. Um, and then we're going to separate those out, and I'm hearing, what am I hearing? Am I hearing one going to two or two across the board? I need some clarification because we need to put this thing together.
Two across the board, I don't think, split in a wake up.
Yeah, I always split the wake up.
I just, I don't think it's going to make any difference. I don't think anybody's getting out on Monday and Tuesday, and it doesn't really matter what night it is, if they're getting out, they're getting out. It's not going to be any safer on a Tuesday than a Saturday.
Okay, let's. Yeah, I can, I think.
Okay, okay, two o'clock? All right.
Six to two. Every day.
So we're going to change our section six, break out package sales and, and make sure that it's consistent throughout the ordinance. And then, uh, extend, um, by the drink sales to two, that's where you guys currently are right now, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, all right.
Which is in the two AM. And then you were already getting rid of the New Year's Eve.
Yeah.
It's, there's no sense in having it.
I think we move it back to ten, uh, PM on New Year's. We'll have no New Year celebrations in the city, Carson.
And still, still no delivery on Sunday or.
Yeah, that's not changing. We can change everything on there.
Since C's two AM is.
Okay. All right.
Package sales and all that, so I need to look at it again, rework it and bring it back, just to make sure that's the right.
The change in hours does not, does not affect.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
So, uh, what you have in, in front of you, uh, we normally take a vote on the first reading, although that's not totally required, but that's our, that's what we do at Calvert City typically. So with those changes, and I, and I'll need, John, you got something? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, since Nita made the motion, she'll be the one that needs to make the amendment.
Okay, so we're going to take a vote, and we need a motion in a second, so the ordinance as we intended to be, with just what I had repeated, you want to repeat it yourself or you want me to?
I'll make a motion that we introduce the ordinance to change the, um, sale of alcohol from one o'clock to two o'clock.
From midnight to two o'clock?
From mid, midnight to two o'clock, sorry, from midnight to two o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
And we, but we also, this is only for liquor by the drink, this is not for package sales.
Okay.
Stay at package sales.
Stay the same, right, no changes to that, that's an important point, yeah.
I really think it is because I'm mu- much more worried about somebody picking up a six pack at three o'clock at a package store than I am somebody in a venue like.
Right.
Like Churchill, like Marshall Yards.
And that off-premise sales applies to convenience stores also.
Any of those.
Yes, yes. So our.
malt beverage.
As, as I understand it now, the, it's the off-premise stores that close at midnight. And I don't even know for sure how many off-premise stores we have that sell beer, the liquor store closes earlier than that.
The convenience stores that stay open will stop at midnight if they stay open late, I think we've got, uh, five stars open.
No, five stars.
Oh, twenty-four, seven, it would be able to sell till ten because they'd be open. Most of them are going to close before the hours of, that are over.
But could you just say that this ordinance is applicable only to liquor by the drink sites?
Well, this is.
Well, midnight's going to cha, going to change.
Yes.
Package is not going to change.
Right, I know, that, that's what I meant, but.
Oh, yeah, that's what you're saying, yeah, so no, make a difference there, there's nobody else.
If you're convenient or whatever.
Well, we'll have to put them in the ordinance.
So it's important, the amendment to the ordinance, the, the amendment to the ordinance, the package sales, package sales stay the same. And the amendment is to increase liquor by the drink.
We're, we're only.
Till two AM.
A change in liquor by the drink.
The two AM.
Consider package sales, not just the liquor stores, but the convenience stores.
That's right, that's, that's how the.
That's true.
Right. I mean, to me, if you could.
By the two distinctions.
They're already. But we'll need to add them, add another section to the ordinance specifically.
Yes.
Just putting, yeah, you'll, you'll have to, you'll do that by, by language, yes.
And, uh, Ashley will make sure we do that part the right way, okay, because, because when we, what, go ahead. Right. You got, she's got, she's got to color within lines, we got to make sure we color within lines, we just can't go do whatever.
And we can have a rating.
It affects, I think, is only place.
Probably.
Loves and all those.
Loves, Loves and Speedway, maybe, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Loves does not sell alcohol.
Speedway doesn't either?
Speedway does.
Speedway's.
Speedway, Speedway, five star, but Loves quit selling alcohol sometime back.
Good, so.
There's a case.
And you know, I mean, I, I know that they are named, but what I'm going to get around is the possibility that if they're open at three, and the other, the package, the other entities have the opportunity, and they thought they were getting extra business, that they would start staying open to get that, but more than likely, they won't, just trying to address that.
Right.
I agree. Beer, beer does not bring a big profit in. And so, but it's, unless you sell like those, five stars, yeah, but still. We go, all packages will not go up to midnight.
But I really appreciate what, what you've said, and nothing changes for the package, and we're mending liquor by the drink to two, and Ashley's going to make sure we're coloring between the proper ABC lines and get it all done the right way, and I'm seeing a lot of nodding around the table. But we, are we done negotiating and talking now? All right, so we, we, I think Nita's made the motion, and we need a second.
A second. I was a second.
Okay, you're okay with seconded it, okay, all right, so we got a second, and, uh, we'll, we'll take a roll call vote on this first reading.
Okay, Mayor, would you please repeat what Nita's motion was?
Okay, so the motion as it stands is that, uh, it's a convoluted rights, so, so right now, the Calvert City ordinance does not make a distinction on hours of sales between package and liquor by the drink. So what the, what the motion is, is that we separate those two entities for the first time in hours of cell, so the hours of cell for package will remain the same. Midnight.
Six to midnight.
Six AM to midnight, and they will remain the same, and the proposed amendment is to make provision to sell liquor by the drink until two AM, Monday through Sunday. Is that it, Nina, I hope I got it, okay. So we're going to, we got a motion and a second, and we're going to have a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilwoman Shelton.
Yes.
Councilman Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Rao is absent, uh, Councilman Brown.
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, and with that said, um, we'll get into departmental reports. And then we will. And then we will graduate and to see we have, uh, concerns from, from the council after that. And, and Scott, I'm sorry you came in here flat-footed and you didn't have proper warning, and I mean, you could have, you could have gone and done some exploratory marketing to see how many more, how many more conventions you could have gotten. They declined. Well, now, hold it, guys, you could go back to the architect, I think it'd be really sporting to have a I C G caboose out there. At Marshall Yards that celebrate our long, uh, railroad heritage here. So if you guys want that, you're gonna have to come out of the shadows with, with, with some, you're gonna show us some initiative, or that'll get away from you. Okay, so, um. John, you wanna do project report first, or? We've had a big, uh, we've, we've crossed a big milestone in one of our projects.
We've actually have completed the, um, uh, multi-use trails. Uh, they've got the fencing up now. Uh, it's, it's got the striping ups. We actually, at the same time, Brad was able to get ahold of brim striping, and they went through and did all of our parking lots as well, including parking lot down at Old Park, uh, here at City Hall, that all looked really good. And then they got the paving done, down here at Memorial Park, and they did do it as, as promised before the fourth. So, yeah, that worked out very well, um. Next year, uh, talking about fireworks, next year is the country's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And, uh, we up the amount for fireworks for next year to give a, a bigger show for the, for that occasion. Um, and we've talked with, uh, pyro shows, and they've done a good job with it. As a matter of fact, we had some complaints last year, I talked directly to Travis and, uh, um, he actually said, when we went over the, the shoot from last year, and we went back, and I said, it's gotta be gotta be redone. And they redid it. It was amazing, I mean, it was amazing. Um, and just moving it up the hill was amazing, the, the ability to get the elevation. And it was just, I, I think it worked out extremely well, I was it's not many fireworks shows that I'm ready to stay past twenty minutes. Usually by twenty minutes, I'm more like, okay, I'm, I'm done with this. But this one, I was, I will say it was over, cause it was, it picked the heartbeat up, it was really good, it really good. Um. The guys were out, I wanna thank the, um, Polycourse boys, they came out and did a spot-on job, as they always do, whipping through the, the community and cleaning it up the next morning. After everything, and the crowd was unbelievable, the night of the emeroration was unbelievable.
Day it was.
So.
All day, it was a good crowd.
Yeah, it was, it seriously was. Um, we have, uh.
Saturday morning, it looked awesome, you couldn't tell what happened on Friday night. Good job.
Um, Smith is now working, they, they've moved. I don't know if they moved all the dirt, but they sure have moved a lot of it over here on the, the new Big Evolve Court area. I think they told me they had a hundred and eighty triax loads they had to bring over to build it up, and when I talked to him Friday, he said, well, we've got ten. So we got, I got a hundred and seventy to go, so, but work good tomorrow, so I don't know how far they got with it, but it sure does look like they made some progress on it, so. Um, and then I think we've got, so. We've got to get some more dirt out of that too, a little extra that, I think, whatever's not needed, we, we're still gonna get some more that's gotta be removed from its current location. And it's not going in the floodplain. Despite what somebody wants. Um. So that one's moving along, um, we are beginning to start back up our, we all have your, your budget workbooks now. We're starting to work, roll those forward, um, the mobile generator has been ordered. We've got some other items that have been ordered, um, pre-ordered. We are still waiting to get some word back on the Sourcewell matter. Um, from the auditor's office, uh, J D Chaney and I had a conversation about that, uh, as well as Megan, who was the, my point of contact originally. And so they're talking with, uh, the auditor balls, uh, uh, her assessment of their assessment on Sourcewell, which is a, like a G S A purchasing company, or, or government purchasing company. And people have been used for years, but all of a sudden she throws something in there, and she didn't say it was wrong, she just said they recommend. So they're going over to talk about some of that language, cause apparently there's some gray area, and so JD said that if they did not get that clarified with the auditor's office. That they would try to get legislation, some legislation and, uh, introduced that would clarify that, the la- the language, so. They're working on that one as well. Um. Right now, we're in the process of getting, um, Polycourse is advertised internally for their new position in parks. Uh, we're building specs for the new, uh, aerial truck. And, um, just getting ready to open up in, uh, a lot of the projects, we've got a list of projects to go, and we're gonna try to get them moving. Um. A lot of infrastructure projects this year, so. That's kinda where we stand.
Okay. Anything else? No?
Not listening, I, I may have forgotten something, it's not impossible. But if you think of something I've forgotten, please let me know, we'll, we'll go over that too.
Okay, Brad, I'm gonna pick on you. Did he miss anything? Overed it all?
Oh, skid stairs down, we've got one.
Okay. Um, park does look good, paving looks good. All the, all the stripes everywhere, uh, look great. I think the parks were well-used during the holiday, it's always our biggest time, and got it done, and I don't know how you did it with all the rain and stuff, but good job on that, so. Moving on, Bobby, you got something from, uh, water? You got, you got a big one to be up for us, we're all gonna like, like his, you.
Yeah, actually, my little list.
You got a list? Oh, wow, he's ahead. Came up, came up, came up to the podium, he's gonna speak into the mic.
But anyway, uh, the, one of the main things that talked about a milestone, it's a little, little milestone, but we started the Low Valley project a little while back. And today, we tie in the last point. So the water is circulating now, and all the, the meter settings are set. So all the ones down Long Valley, we still gotta go down ninety-five, but those but the ones down Long Valley are all there. Uh, we've worked on the last one today. But like I said, the, the water is circulating now, we've got valves on. Um. The other thing I was gonna say is our big milestone, which we haven't reached yet, which is the headworks at Silver Plate.
Gotta be careful not to write a hot check, but go ahead, keep going.
But we have been sent back probably another week. Cause we had some issues with wiring, and we had some gate leakage in the wet wells. So all that's gonna be monitored this week. And I think Thursday, they're coming in to redo the pump tests, and we fix the wiring, and all that's redone. So hopefully, tie in this week. So hopefully we can have that done, and we can say.
We got it, that's, that's been a big one, so we're, he's down in, he's down in punchless territory, technicians come and check this, and, and, you know, it's always the hardest thing to get them closed, so. Hang in there.
Uh, the other thing is, we've started, uh, be watering one of our lagoons for our lining. That's gonna be possibly taking place next week too, starting to get sludge and mud, so we can get the, the project on that stone. Um, another one is, I put, I put out a, uh, bid package for our media. Re, re, uh, the, the redo of the media, the built area. Uh, I think we've talked about that before, but it's, it's.
We, we talked about it a bunch of times.
It, it's been needed, and, uh, I finally got it put together, so we can hopefully get that started around August or something, so we can have all brand and name and, uh, help the plan. And then during that time too, we can finally get the fin- finalized, and put the, the high, the high surface and stuff, so our system should hopefully start running pretty good by the, by the first of fall. Um. And another thing, I mean, I probably don't know if I need to say this or not, but.
Oh, you're gonna say it now?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I got an email today about possible meetings with the state. For the new, the relocation, the vulnerabilities out there by Marshall Yards. So we'll have, we'll have a meeting on that very soon. And that's really all I have.
No. And that, and I do, the, the process with, uh, Marshall Yards and transportation and uh, city Calver everyone, I mean, it's a lot more transparent, work together, cohesive, it's get the, I mean, it's just overall is, is very refreshing compared to what it, it used to be, so that's, that's good news.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you guys.
Alright. Chief? I got one chief tonight. Blair's over hiding on the volume, I'm gonna call on you, man. Last time we had, went out of order, I forgot Blair. We're not gonna do it. Okay.
Emigration hanging behind, and, uh, you were asking what you thought was the estimates.
You got one?
I figured around twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
I'll do soft like thousands.
Came in at six A M that morning, and I didn't go home till about midnight that night, but people weren't coming and going, so whenever the brain actually kicked off, whenever we were going through there, I, I was figuring around twenty-five hundred to three thousand. So, as far as the, uh, days, days events, besides, uh, golf carts and side-by-sides on Fifth Avenue, but the only other issue that we really had was, uh, someone thought it was okay to set off fireworks at the, uh, Casey's right next to gas pumps.
Not such a broad idea.
And then got that person straightened out, and then, um, I mean, it was fun, a lot of, a lot of people were happy. But the, it was, it was great, uh, all the guys were out there, worked, uh, they got to experience it, uh, so that's good, as far as potential hiring for a, another, uh, officer. This is what, uh, I'm thinking, we're trying to acquire everything that we need this month, and then in August, we'll do a screening process. Hopefully by September, have somebody start, and then that'll give them a few months to learn the city, learn learn the people, and then by the time the Marshall Yards gets started, we should we should have enough man, man, that would deal with whatever's gonna happen.
Or women bar.
Yeah, so, uh, as far as what's coming up, um, I think in, in August, uh, there's Chiefs Conference, Captain and I are gonna go to in order. And then this January, we have a P L C back from this year. And a couple of guys have some trainings coming up, but we do have a Taser instructor class that's gonna happen here in two weeks.
Always training.
So, most of it, which is a good deal.
At least volunteers.
For, for what? Oh, Ruben Taze, I thought you meant Sheik though, I'm sorry, I got confused.
So it saves us.
Yep, yep. Well, uh, so keep up the tradition of Calver City being a favored training spot for law enforcement.
Deputy, or, or Deputy Commissioner, the L C J T's been here twice, and he likes our facilities, and he's trying to advocate for more classes here, and so he hadn't guaranteed anything, but he says that he is, uh, advocating for us at the state level to have more trainers here.
Again, sounds great, and you know, you forgot something, and I thought it was important, the bicycle patrol. We had bicycle patrol, you ought to catch, you, they had, they have.
Of course, bicycles, we've had a storage for the last several years, but hadn't really got them out, so we went and got serviced and made this up, and then, uh, then, uh, Officer Novo, Officer Starks, uh, for the, uh, break down. Uh, that is something that I wouldn't like to look, look at in the future, is sending a couple of them to the bicycle pat- patrol class, you know, certified to actually patrol, that may be great, like a summertime, uh, pat- patrol.
Spring, it starts a new front wheel, for God's sake. Don't know.
You need to send them the bike bus, they need to ride along one day.
Yeah.
They wrangle them kids for, for one morning, then that'll be all the class.
It's like Tuesday mornings, right?
Yep, Tuesday mornings and afternoons.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll, I'll look at schedules, see if we can get, but, have them on, so that's the rotation. About that, you guys have any other questions? Alright, appreciate the sound, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Blair, you're on the spot, and she's got, she's carrying paper. And I do have, do you have this cooperative extended service, everybody get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Alright, so there is a, uh, everybody's got a copy of Ruben Canning Ceremony on July twenty-one of the County Extension Office, open house. Have you got caught up on sleep yet from emeration?
Yeah, okay, close.
We're gonna sleep today. Um, just run through what's coming up. Um, obviously, thank you, everything, everybody for emeration, it was great, lots of help and um, time went into it, uh, all the way around Polycourse, police, everyone. Everybody was involved, involved, I didn't get too much hate, uh, hip hate mail for not having watermelon. So that was good. I think I only disappointed my husband, Garrett, um, and maybe like two hundred, so.
I've been, I didn't.
I know, I know.
But we're gonna make sure the pop pickles are frozen next year, so, that's the only other thing we're gonna.
We're gonna do a little bit better, we learned a lot, um, from emeration, but upcoming, uh, we have the yard of the season, that is due July the thirty-first. Um, and then we're gonna have, um, I sent around a flyer for the state park, they are doing a splash bash. And it's with the Marshall County Family Day, uh, it's been a popular park for the last, I don't know, a hundred years, I think. Uh, but the state park is, is gonna do it this year, and there are a lot of fun activities, uh, but I know the fire department and the police department are gonna be a part of it that day, so. Uh, if you have, you have kids, just share that, because I think that will be fun, but they're gonna have little sailing boats where you could try learn how to sail, um, the Tennessee Riverline, they're gonna be using their kayaks uh, for, you know, teaching kids how to kayak that day, um, so it should just be a lot of funs. Um, and then the other flyer I passed around was the military tribute project that Takeda is doing, um, it's something that uh, you can purchase a sign for your, your veteran. Be recognized on Veterans Day, so share that information if you can, that would be great. Uh, the other thing that's coming up is the Back to School Splash, which was a really great hit last year, um, August the fifteenth. And if you know a business that wants to be a part of it, last year, we had a couple of businesses, State Farm and, um, Sprout, uh, Therapy, uh, Sprout, they helped. Not that sprout, different sprout. Anyway, um, so they helped, and they handed out some school supplies, and you know, it was just nice to see, uh, it's a good, good, uh, event for kids, kinda get them back, get to see kids that they hadn't seen all summer. As well as parents kinda can mingle and, and meet, uh, meet parents that are, they're there. Uh, and then we have, um, that's the Community Wide Yard Sale, that is September the fourth through sixth, so if you wanna register for that, last year, we had twenty or something, twenty-four, fifty yard sales, um, it's on Facebook, uh, the link is on Facebook. We have twenty-one hundred people that are interested in that event. Lots of people came last year, so, uh, hopefully we'll have a good turnout for everyone again this year.
So that's about half of what showed up for fireworks.
Yeah, it's, that's an abnormal amount, uh, for for the, for that type of event, so lots of, lots of interest there. Uh, so in June, end of June, I went to the, uh, Health Department, they had a community, uh, forum for, um, to go over the findings that they found for the community assessment. They do a community assessment every three years, and I just wanted to run through a couple of the info, just a couple of the data that they
This is the Health Department?
The Health Department, yes, uh, so they, they do an assessment every three years, they pull, you know, pull the community, you answer the questions, I emailed it out to everybody, uh, fill out those, uh, that question uh, survey, and then, uh, it also goes to the high school students, they do a sit-down with elementary students and just talk to them one-on-one and get questions answered from them, uh, so it really is great data uh, of what's happening in our county. Uh, so it really is great data uh, of what's happening in our county. Uh, and from that survey, the top priorities, I'm just gonna go with the top five, well, top six maybe, uh, is access to mental health care, access to healthy food, housing, transportation, access to physical health, healthcare and access to healthy activities. So that's the top six priorities that the communities saw. Uh, the top risk factors is alcohol, tobacco and drug, and drug use, abuse, neglect, sexual assault, poor eating habits, limited access to healthy foods and access to healthcare, including medications. And then also uh, lack of a living wage. Those are the top five for the risk factors. So I have this um, in digital form. So I will send this to you. It's like forty pages long. So I wasn't gonna print it off for y'all, but.
So it was.
I'm welcome. I will happily print it off too.
So was it, was it a, a prepackaged type assessment or something that they considered heavily and did themselves? You gave us a link to it, right?
Yes. I have a link. Uh, they hired, they hired a company, uh, Dr. Miranda Terry.
Okay. So that's a report. Okay.
Surf work. Um, but it has a lot of really great data in there. It talks about crime numbers. Uh, you know, it talks about life, life expectancy of Marshall County was seventy-four. For checkups, people who, who commonly get checkups every year, the highest was um, four-two-zero-four-four, is that Benton?
Four-four.
Gilbertsville. So I mean, that's, I mean, the next sentence, um, you know, that's, you know, a lot of your money is there, um, you know, in the light areas. And then the lowest for checkups was four-two-zero-two-five. Uh, cholesterol screenings. So we felt like in. Yeah. So we fell in the meat, in the middle there. One thing for colon screenings, we were in the lowest um, in that for colon, colon screenings. Um, and then, so it just really has some really great data that um, check out. Um, we, I think that you'll find similar. But a lot of it's based on how many people answered the survey though, huh? Yes. Well, no, not really. No. I mean, it's based on studies and you know, other, other surveys that are out there too. But um, yeah, every, every three years they do it. I know this year Marshall County was rock ranked in the top ten for uh, counties of a hundred and twenty counties. Uh, la- last two years, two years ago when they did it, um, where they were ranked twenty-one. So they went, we went up quite a bit, which is pretty awesome to see. But I'll email this to you. Just check it out. It's a lot of good information, I thought. Um, and other than that.
That's all you got?
All I got.
That's it?
Yep.
Thank you so much. Okay. Um, Judge Frags came to see us today. I'm really putting him on the spot. I didn't even prime him for anything. Is there anything you wanna, you wanna? Uh, anything come out of the senior citizens kickoff?
Uh, excuse me. Have a board in place. They had their first board meeting tonight. I was gonna try to go, but I'm here. So there's only two things you have to, you know, juggle and decide. But yeah, they had their first, uh, first meeting tonight. Uh, met with Architectural Firm the other day, trying to get some pricing together to submit for the grant, grant, uh, exactly two grants, but with total a million and uh, trying to get money for the state budget also. Chris Sprigland and Dan Carroll both are working on that. So I feel really good about it this time. The first time did not pan out.
Right. And I've sent Larry Witt to be part of that, at least this initial part. I think that he's a good one. Knowing how to set up facilities and handle many stuff, many things like that. And so he, he agreed to do it and send him to be part of that. So and the facility is in Benton. And transportation will have to come at some time to get Calver Cityans involved. So that's good news. Uh, Channel Six missed, missed it the other day. They said Marshall hadn't adopted the U T V stuff. I'm like, what? So okay, they missed it. So um, with that said, we'll go and ask the council. Kevin, you got anything? Nita?
I just wanted, did you repair the splash pad?
Yes, it's still working. I mean, we're still having some issues, but.
I'm, I'm talking about where the, it was vandalized.
Oh.
Oh. I think it's, it's up for operational.
Cleaned off what they could have.
Oh, you took all that, yeah.
That was lovely. That, that was a lovely piece and, and I don't have any good say about that. So I'll say nothing. Uh, okay.
I had my rant.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna brag to uh, Chief Davis about the, during the fourth of July, there was a medical emergency in the park and they were there very quickly because they were just across the park and it was handled very appropriately. I was, I was very impressed.
They do a good job. There's a, you know, nobody wants to have a medical emergency, but right there it probably had two or three E M Ts right there and maybe a medic. I'm not sure. But uh, you know, somebody asked me, so what happened to the wall of water? We used to turn the fire trucks and blow the horn. I was like, we've got the permanent wall of water now. Get in there. You know, we, we used to send all the kids covered with fescue grass on the way back. Mud up to their knees off the soccer field.
I'm sure some of them.
Yeah. Anything else or just Frags? Okay. Ralph, you got anything?
No.
Dustin?
I do not.
You do not? Okay.
Mayor, I see.
Judge.
We're about to wrap up the communications project. We've been waiting for months for the final components of that. It's the repeaters going to the tower sites. So hopefully we'll save it in the next um, forty-five days. So I'll be wrapped up. It's roughly a million dollar project.
Is that, is that both sides? The fire and the police?
Police.
Police. Okay.
The fire, uh, I think they're working on some, some things to better their service.
Okay.
One thing we've done uh, with the S O is put repeaters in the cars in that S O big time when they're in areas. Uh, we, we tested five areas initially where they had no service and I was with them on the first three. And uh, you know, the repeater allows the handheld to communicate with the car instead of trying to communicate with the tower site, which that has done fantastic for us. So very, very pleased with that. So.
Good work. I know it's uh, it's something that's uh, very important.
Well, it's been going on for about fifteen years. So I think we're.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you for that info. And with that said, it is time.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you very much.
Reason y'all let me come.
So we can leave, right?
Okay. I don't need any.
Well, I have not. I'll make sure I look at it. We just, we just sent.
Two hours. Yeah.
Well, okay. I said. That's fine. No, I hadn't. That's fine. I haven't looked at emails since Friday.